Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the school committee meeting for Monday, September 17th, 2018, to order. If you would all please stand for the salute to the flag. The American flag is in the back corner of the library.
Oh, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please, Ms. Kenton.
John Nunes.
Yep.
Kathleen Amaral.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins. Carol Karafotis.
Here.
Christopher Oliver.
Here.
Thank you. Just like to let everyone in the audience know, and also at home, that this meeting is being televised, being taped by our own Dartmouth High School media for broadcast later on during the week on Channel 9 Dartmouth Cable Television. So it's usually Wednesday, Friday, and Sundays and other times that they fit us in, and we appreciate all of that. Also, too, if anybody has any cell phones, pagers, beepers, electronic devices, if you would kindly put them on silent or vibrate, I would appreciate that. At this point in time, we've allocated some time for public comment, if anybody has any comments on tonight's agenda items. Okay. That's good. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes of our last school committee meeting, which was August 27th, 2018.
Still moved?
Moved by Mr. Oliver.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dr. Carol Fotis. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. All right. Next order of business, Dr. Gifford, is the welcome and introduction of the new teachers, Project Time. I know Mrs. Oliver has that.
As Mrs. Oliver comes, I'm saying Oliver.
Olivera.
We should tell them, huh?
Wow, I did.
They're messing up tonight.
I'm telling you.
I wasn't aware.
We do.
I could say lucky you.
Yeah. First, I'd like to take a moment just to thank Jean Sheridan, our new nutrition director, who, as you just saw, put on a lovely snack time for our folks coming in tonight. And we really appreciate that. So again, our Director of Teaching and Learning, Tracy will go over the Project Time, and her name will still be Olivera.
I'm Tracy Olivera.
Wow.
And I'm here, and I'm here tonight just to go over Project Time, which is our teacher induction and mentoring experience. I wear many hats in the district, and I have to say, this is one of my favorite ones, where we get to welcome in our new teachers and kind of coddle them with our veteran teachers, set them up with mentor partnerships, and get them off and going for the year. So our mission statement for Project Time is right here, and it really is about that coddling. It's about setting up our brand-new teachers, whether they're new to the teaching profession or whether they've been teaching for many years and they're just new to Dartmouth. We set them up with a veteran teacher, and I was explaining to someone earlier, try to get some of the minutia out of the way so that they can just concentrate being in the classroom, doing what they do best, and that's working with our students. Our bottom line is always about raising student achievement, so we say, if we can take care of some of the things for teachers, some of the paperwork and stuff, and they can just be in the classroom teaching. That is kind of our end goal. There's two parts to Project Time. There's an induction part and a mentoring part. Induction is really broad-based. It focuses district-wide, there are group meetings, where mentoring is more one-on-one. Depending on what kind of licensure people have, they'll either stay for just the induction part, or they'll be here for two years, which is the induction, and then a second year of mentoring, which is a DESI regulation. All of our new hires, every year, get to spend two days in the summertime with me, two long, hot days. That's what the Red Bull is. We go fast. We do an awful lot of topics. We just cover them kind of on the surface area, kind of one of these, this is what you should know, this is what we're going to be diving into as the year goes on. And I can say, it takes a village, because over those two days, I call in all of our experts from across the district to come in and work with our new people. So we have the Dartmouth Police coming in to do Alice training. We have Mrs. Pervail from the DeMello School comes in to do a Skillful Teacher, our book club that we work on all year. We use the Skillful Teacher by John Safier, and she comes and starts that work for our new folks. Kyle Robidoux comes in and does our curriculum piece. We go over some reimbursement procedures, suicide prevention from Alie Kato-Galligan, and the list goes on. Throughout the year, we have about eight meetings. You can see them here. It's the same format that we do every year, but I tell people, we mix it up. So depending upon the feedback from the group in front of this group, what did they like, what worked, what didn't work, and the knowledge base of the folks coming in, we reorder the topics, or sometimes we bring in new topics. For example, a couple of years ago, we had to really dive into teacher evaluation, because it was new for a lot of people, but now we don't do a lot with that, because we feel people already have known the system. So we just briefly touch on how we do it here in Dartmouth. Whereas Aspen is our student information system. Sometimes folks have a lot of knowledge with that, so we'll just go over it quickly, and sometimes we have to go real deep into it, depending on where folks are. So we meet, like I said, eight times over the course of the year. We dive into the Skillful Teacher book, and we have topics that range from everything. So now I'm just going to introduce folks, and I just ask them to stand and give a little wave as I got through their names, and also with their mentors. And also, if you want to get to know them a little bit more, if you can log onto our Facebook account, we do what we call Spotlight, Staff Spotlight, so we had them answer just a few fun questions, and you can read all about them. If you don't have a Facebook account, you can log onto our DPS website, and we have it scrolling across the front of the screen, so get to know them, and what movies they like, and what books they like, and why they chose to teach here in Dartmouth. But I'll start at DeMello School, introducing people. We have Brett Bolger, our new school psychologist, and he's being mentored by Katie Neus. Daniel Santos is our special education teacher at DeMello School, and Sarah Ventora is a special education teacher at DeMello School, and they are both being mentored by Sarah Kudo. And Hannah Robidoux is at DeMello School, is an art teacher, and her mentor is David Finn Clark. And I just have to tell a story. They already formed partnerships and bonds. When Hannah walked in, David just said, hey, get a name tag. And she went off and got a name tag, and they really have a nice partnership, so it worked. It worked for them, and it was in a very sweet and loving way that he gave her the directions of what she needed to do. At Potter School, we have Melanie Smitten, kindergarten teacher, and Andrea Abreu is her mentor. Quinn School, we have Anne Rolini, grade-one teacher, and Amy Pollak is her mentor. Let's just get that going. And Catherine Morris is our therapeutic program teacher, with Missy Josa is her mentor. Amanda Pimento is our long-term sub at grade four, and Janine Tavares is her mentor. DMS, we have Anna Marks, and she is our Portuguese-Spanish teacher, and Sue Peelock is her mentor. And over at the high school, we have Tara Kearney, our English teacher, with Will Higgins as a mentor. Brian Guo, our computer science teacher, and Jeff Lemler is his mentor. Taylor Souza is our chemistry/physics teacher, with Doug Smith as his mentor. Stephanie Church is our new math teacher at Dartmouth High School, and Rochelle Lemieux is her mentor. Andrew Maderas is our new PE teacher and strength conditioning coach, and Paul Pervail was his mentor. Katherine Olson is our special education teacher at the high school, with Deb August as her mentor. Daniel McGrath is our new guidance counselor, and Kathy Thomas is his mentor. Weeping Judas is our world language teacher at the high school, and Hillary Souza is her mentor. Megan Tully is our new English teacher at the high school, and I'm not sure if she was here, she was just hired literally days ago, but we welcome her. And Melissa Sullivan is our new district social worker, and Allison Kato-Galligan is her mentor. So we were quick, and we welcome everyone. I can't get on it. And I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Questions, comments?
Questions, comments?
Welcome to everyone. I'm glad to have you in Dartmouth.
Right. It's a great system to work for, and I'm sure you'll find that out very quickly. So thank you for joining our staff.
You're welcome.
I met most of them the first day of school, but again, welcome to the Dartmouth District. As I've said before, and I kind of say it all the time, you know, please, you know, lean on your mentors for help in any questions or problems you have, you know, things that pop up. Yeah, maybe they don't know the answer, but they've been around long enough that they'll know somebody that has an answer, and they'll guide you, and I assure you, they'll guide you in the right way. So welcome to the best district in the state, and have a good year. Anybody else? Good? All right. Now, at this point in time, we know you have nothing better to do tonight, and you're more than welcome to sit back and enjoy three hours of a school committee meeting, but you also have papers to correct and lesson plans to do, so if you would like to leave, you are dismissed. And again, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah. At this point in time, it's a new school year, and we are very fortunate, as always, to have a student representative here this year, so I'm going to turn it over to him, let him introduce himself, and tell us a little bit about himself, and what's going on here at the high school.
Thank you so much for having me. My name is Shane Rose. I am a senior at Dartmouth High School. I'm in multiple clubs, athletics, and within the school system, and I've been here since preschool, so I'm very fortunate to have this position and very thankful. And although school just started, we have many successes at Dartmouth High. The first is our peer mentor program. Over 100 upperclassmen helped in a three-day learning program to help the incoming freshmen have their orientation day and just acclimate to the new school, and it was a great way to start off the school year for the freshmen and really get to know not only the school and the teachers, but also the students they'll be with in their classes. The next up was, this past Friday, we had a back-to-school bash, which was a great way for students to hang out in a safe place before the football game, and they were able to get hamburgers, hot dogs, and there was a bubble balance, face paint. And they were also, more importantly, able to meet with Dartmouth High School administration. And this is really important, because they were able to make connections and build relationships outside of school that usually you don't see in other school systems. And I think that's one way and one aspect that Dartmouth High School excels as a district within the state of Massachusetts. We also recently had our club fair, in which students were able to explore their options within Dartmouth High School and look at the different clubs. And we're very excited to have two new additions to our school, the fishing club and the skiing club, and so we're really excited to see how that works out in the future. But we have many sign-ups for clubs across the school. And so upcoming events include the counseling department has planned a post-secondary fair, which will take place actually tomorrow, and there will be many colleges and universities, as well as each of the branches of the armed forces. And this will allow students, juniors, and seniors to just explore their options for post-secondary plans and see what they have, and meet with the college and university representatives, and talk to them about what they're looking for. And once again, this is a great aspect of Dartmouth High School, because we are very fortunate enough to literally be meeting with the representatives and knowing what these schools want from us. And so just knowing that gives us an advantage, and we're very thankful and fortunate to the counseling department to have planned this, because it must have taken a lot of time to get 90 colleges and universities. So thank you, Counseling Department and Dartmouth High School Administration. On Thursday, September 20th this year, the Dartmouth High School also have its open house, and so at the end of the evening, administration will open up parents and guardians to meet with guidance counselors and also the administration on one-to-one, answering any questions they have. And so this is a great way, an informal way, I guess you could say, for parents to not only meet the guidance counselors and the administration at the school, but also ask questions that they may not be able to ask at any other point in time. And the last upcoming event that we have is on September 29th. The Dartmouth High School marching band, our very successful Dartmouth High School marching band, will host a home show at Dartmouth Memorial Stadium, and we wish them well as they start their next season, as well as all the athletics who have started, including football, soccer, field hockey. And so we're very excited. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything for, any questions for Shane? No? Okay. Thank you, Shane. Welcome, and glad to have you.
Shane, are you going to be here every week for a certain amount of time? Are you rotating with anyone?
So I'll be here for the first semester of school, and then second semester will be a new representative.
Thank you. You did a really nice job.
Nice job.
Thank you so much.
Plenty of information. Thank you. Okay. If you bear with me for a second, we have a couple of consent items on the agenda regarding some fundraising, and I'm just going to quickly take those out of order, just to get them done. We have the annual request from the Dartmouth School Music Association for their list of fundraisers that they have. Anybody have any questions? Entertainer motion to approve?
Was that the Dartmouth Music?
Yes.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
I saw mattresses?
Yeah.
What are we doing with mattresses?
There is a company that comes in, they came in last year, and people have the ability to purchase regular mattresses and box springs and that type of deal, and the association gets a cut of the proceeds.
Oh, wow. Is that a first? Have you done that before?
We did it last year.
Oh.
It was on last year's list.
Missed it.
But again, who remembers from one year to the next? I don't.
I know.
Exactly. Okay.
I do have another question, Mr. Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
What point, just so we can make the parents and everyone else in the community aware, I'd like to know some kind of figure on, you know, I don't know if it's next fall or this fall for last year, what kind of money are we raising? I think that's important to note.
Yeah, those are still being, we had a meeting Tuesday night, last Tuesday night, and those numbers are still being put together. They haven't been finalized yet.
Okay. I'd just love to see that, because I think it's important.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, like we say, I think we say this at every other meeting, that there's a lot of money raised.
Yeah.
Through parent volunteering.
Yeah. Once those are finalized, I'll get copies to everybody.
Perfect. Thank you.
No problem. So, okay, so can I have a motion to approve this?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Amaral.
Go ahead.
Seconded by Dr. Carol Fotis. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. The last, the other one we have is also from the middle school PTO. Their annual request looks like they're selling pies and mixed bags and that type of deal. Again, I think these are usuals for them. Any questions or comments? Chair, entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Amaral.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Oliver. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Dr. Gifford, back to you for some good stuff, recognition.
Some really good stuff. So tonight, we are here to recognize some folks that have played a huge part in our unified athletic program and have won an award. We've received a award of distinction. So before we get started, I'd like to call them to the podium. John Bro, Kristen Baptista, Mike Capello, all teachers here who are also coaches in the program, as well as Officer Pacheco and Officer Tavares. I did see them somewhere.
They're up in the back. Yep.
There they are.
And as you know, we have many aspects of how we be a fully-inclusive district, and the Special Olympics included, and our unified athletic program, they're kind of all one and the same, if you will. But the program is fantastic. These gentlemen have, and Kristen have really done a nice job getting it off the ground. Why we're bringing our offices as well, because on the day that we have the Special Olympics event, if you've come to it, you see the turnout of offices in our area, state police, as well as various towns, and these gentlemen have a lot to do with that, really getting that participation. So I wanted them to be recognized. Obviously, there are many folks that help out in this program, our teachers that work with our students, et cetera, but these folks are our coaches and our offices that support this. So with great pleasure, I'd like to congratulate Dartmouth High School for receiving what we are calling a national banner recognition. It has been named a Unified Champion School by Special Olympics. Dartmouth High, in meeting 10 criteria relative to inclusiveness and more, has demonstrated what it means to work together to foster a community that embraces differences and ensures that all are welcome and supported. Dartmouth High School is one of 10 schools in Massachusetts and 131 schools nationally to receive this distinction. And before, I'd ask them then, if they would like to make a comment, I'd like to show a quick clip from Tim Schreiber, who is the Special Olympics International Director, I guess, if you will. It's one minute.
Hello, my name's Tim Schreiber, the Chairman of Special Olympics, and it is my enormous honor to join with thousands of Special Olympics athletes, families, volunteers, and community leaders from all over the world in congratulating you on achieving the status of Unified Champion School, on meeting the 10 criteria set out to achieve this standard, and even more, for believing in the importance, the urgency, the necessity of a more inclusive and a more welcoming future for all. You've made your school a place where empathy and compassion, where grit and resilience, where inclusion is the standard by which you live and learn. You've made your classrooms into places of inclusion, your hallways, your cafeterias, your buses, your playing fields into places of inclusion. Our hope is in you, that you will build the unified generation where, once and for all, people with intellectual challenges and their non-disabled peers will see each other as equals, equal in the sight of their country, their families, their communities, and their schools. You are a Unified Champion School, and the future rests with you. Thank you for leading us forward.
So with that, yes. Welcome down. I'd like to say something that we certainly appreciate it.
I don't think I can follow up with much more between Dr. Gifford and Mr. Schreiber, but just quickly to say thank you to Dr. Gifford and the school committee for recognizing us. It's an honor that's been long in the making, and I think the people behind me, whether it's Mr. Capello, Ms. Baptista, who couldn't be here, Officer Tavares, Officer Pacheco, Mr. Tebow, our principal here at the high school, there are many people that, you know, put a program like this into fruition. And it's like the inclusive model, it's a team, and there's certainly a team behind us that makes that possible. So success has been long coming, but it's a team effort, so thank you very much for having us, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just to follow up with John was saying, we've been involved with this for many years, and our inclusive program has really kind of taken off. We have a kind of a Young Athletes' Day. We're, our preschool athletes are involved in unified sports. Our middle school and high school students, we have graduates involved. We host the school day games. We had over 400 athletes last time from neighboring towns. We go to Boston every year for the track and field event, where we brought 40 students there to compete in track and field. So it's really been a great thing, and the support has been fantastic, as John said, from Mr. Karen as well, and just kind of keeping us all together and making the students here are just great. And it's been great. It's been a lifelong thing for me, so I really appreciate the honor and the recognition here, and a lot goes to a lot of the new young teachers, too, that have really taken this with passion and taken off with it, so it's been a great thing, so I appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just to mirror what everybody else is saying, I think this district has done a great job with that program. Glad to be a part of it, and Mr. Capello and Mr. Bro do a great job since I've been in the schools running this program. Thank you.
Comments?
I just have a question. First of all, congratulations. It's a wonderful, extremely wonderful accomplishment. I'm just wondering now, from year to year, are you reevaluated? Is this one, do they come back and check on you? How does that work?
So that's the unique part. This was, you just had to meet the 10 standards, and it was something that Mr. Tebow, Mr. Karen worked with us here to make sure we fulfilled them before we submitted the paperwork.
I see.
And then they just cross-checked the references and that kind of thing, and once you earn it, it's there for good.
Well, wonderful.
Very special, but thank you.
Thank you.
And they'll be receiving a banner, I guess, at another presentation.
Yes, yeah, we, the banner was a little too big to bring here.
Oh, come on.
We do have it, but Special Olympics actually is in the works with working with our school to hopefully do some kind of pep rally, where it's the teams themselves are recognized, so that the kids can get their time in the limelight.
Oh, fantastic. Let us know.
We sure, yeah, we'll keep you in the loop on that.
Keep us in the loop. Much appreciated.
Thank you, though.
Thank you. I mean, you guys know how supportive I am of what you've done, and it's really a testament to your leadership and your just instilling in the students, all the students, that they are one, and that it's inspiring. And I did, in a conversation in planning for an event, I'm understanding that your basket, you have too, you have too many people sign up, that you're going to have two basketball teams?
Yes, that's been a common problem. It's a good problem, but, yeah, the team sizes are growing exponentially, and so it looks like we're going to have two basketball teams this fall.
Wonderful.
It's good for the kids.
Absolutely.
The cool part, too, is now that one of the standards, Dr. Carol Fotis, was five years. This program had to be around and sustain itself for five years, and the nice part about that is now you're seeing kids that are getting toward the end of college, and that's starting to resonate and come back to the community. So that's the piece that I think is aside from the sports and the inclusion, but getting members out in the community and have that aspect resonate.
And that understanding and that awareness, I mean, it's only going to get better from here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
I'll just say, what a wonderful honor for the school district, for all of you. Congratulations to all those staff members that were a part of this, and what a great opportunity for our students to learn inclusiveness and just be a part of this program. So kudos to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nothing else I can say. I can add that everybody else is just, you know, congratulations, job well done, and go to, thanks to also the students that help you guys with the program and that type of deal, so fantastic. Give up the good work, and to Officer Tavares and Officer Pacheco for their behind-the-scenes work with everything. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay. All right.
What's next?
School improvement plans.
Okay. So first up tonight, we have Melissa McHenry from the Cushman School. She talks about our littlest learners.
Thank you again for this yearly opportunity to share some highlights from the Cushman School Improvement Plan. I know you have the full document, but we're just going to highlight a few areas this evening. So starting under teaching and learning, our work in literacy continues. It's been a multi-year plan. Currently, in our kindergarten, we have fully implemented the Lucy Cawkins units of study in both reading and within the writer's workshop. This year specifically, we're going to be focusing on what's called if/then writing units and reading units, and that coincides with the Lucy Cawkins curriculum. This offers teachers an opportunity to create some additional units to teach based on student assessment data. So an example to share tonight is some of the work that we did last year. Our kindergarten teachers, along with our literacy coach Lori O'Neill, have written one unit already, so I'll tell you a little bit about where that came from. So they use their running records data, which is something that they do daily with students, and it's just a way for them to capture what readers know and what they're able to understand in the reading process. So they decided from that data that the if/then lesson, the unit titled "Readers Are Resourceful" was a perfect fit for our students at that time. So the reason for that was it highlighted some of the foundational skills for beginning readers who were reading at a level C, D, or E. So the teachers and Lori O'Neill designed lessons to teach readers more strategies for word-solving, cross-checking, self-correcting, and meaning-making, and to be able to model and meaning-making, and to be able to model for them what careful readers do. So, that was just one example that was started last year. So, we're gonna continue working on those "if/then" units in other areas moving forward for this year in kindergarten. As far as preschool and literacy, last year, our preschool teachers participated in some professional development in a program called Lively Letters, which is currently what is used in our kindergarten. It's a phonics program. So, they received professional development last year, and now this year, they're gonna fully implement that into their classrooms as part of their daily routine. So, this will ensure a great foundation for our students and also a seamless transition from our preschool classrooms into kindergarten. So, that's what we're doing in both grade levels for literacy. Under math, we started some of this work last year with our kindergarten teachers. They were working with the math coach Maureen Dorsey, who I share with the DeMello School. And they started looking at the three components of the math workshop model. So, this year, we're going to extend that work and include preschool teachers along with our kindergarten teachers to continue some professional development with the goal of incorporating some of those components of the math workshop into our daily instruction and with our Envision program. This will help to balance whole group and small group lessons, instructional groupings for students, and center activities so that we can support all learners. So, those who are at grade level, those who need some intervention, as well as those students who need enrichment activities as well. So, to help support this work, in our preschool, we're gonna be doing some book studies in both preschool and math. But for preschool, we're gonna be utilizing the book, Exploring Mathematics Through Play, in the early childhood classroom to kind of tie that in with preschool play. And in kindergarten, we're looking at Math Workstations and Independent Learning You Can Count On. That's the name of the book that we'll be using during those sessions, during our monthly staff meetings. So, that's Teaching and Learning. Under Access and Equity, we continue to support the district and the professional development that's been happening under brain-based therapeutic practices. We're gonna take it a little deeper in our early childhood classrooms to see what does that look like at the early childhood level. And we're gonna be focusing on the four Rs of brain-based practice, which is routines, recognition, relationships, and restoration. And like I said, what that looks like for our littlest learners in the classroom. Along with the work that we've been doing and the collaboration with Carolyn McCurney, we're also going to use a national resource. It's called the Center on the Social and Emotional Foundations for Early Learning. For anyone out there who's wondering, you just Google C-S-E-F-E-L. And it's funded by the Office of Head Start and our Childcare Bureau. And they disseminate research and evidence-based practices, and it's specific to early childhood programs. So, they focus on promoting social-emotional development and school readiness for young children from birth all the way up to age five. So, they provide training modules on their site in multiple areas related to social and emotional needs of our youngest learners. So, we'll be using those modules along with the work that we're already doing with Carolyn as part of our PD sessions with the staff. So, in addition to that, we're also gonna be looking at evidence-based practice for inclusion. As you know, all of our preschool classrooms are inclusion models. So, we'll start by defining what evidence-based practice looks like at that level, and we'll be using what's called the Educator Effectiveness Guidebook for Inclusive Practices, which was created by Massachusetts educators, and it's available on the DESI website. The guidebook is a tool for districts, schools, and educators that are aligned to the educator evaluation framework, and it promotes evidence-based practices for inclusion using universal design for learning, positive behavior interventions and supports, and social-emotional learning. So, for this year, we'll focus on identifying signs of inclusive practices in both preschool and kindergarten, as well as using one of their practice tools to review our lessons and our units for examples of inclusiveness to help refine our teaching practice. The goal, hopefully, by the end of the school year is to not only refine our practice, but it also opens up the opportunity for teachers to observe other teachers, to see the best practice in action in another classroom. So, that's our work under Access and Equity. Community engagement is always a work that we look at every year, especially with our youngest students who are just leaving the home to come to us for the first time. So, we continue to look for opportunities where we can get parents, families, actively involved in the school setting, and also providing them with as much communication as we can. So, under Communication, we're utilizing the electronic backpack for the first time this year. Yay, Michelle, I'm on there. So, every Thursday, parents get an email from me with all of the information that's happening in the school, newsletters, calendars, whatnot, through our Aspen email, as well as utilizing the new district website to keep updating that information as well, now that it's up and ready to go. This year, as far as getting more parents involved, we're actually putting together a parent volunteer group, and we're actually meeting this Wednesday morning. So, anyone out there who wants to join me for a coffee with the director, it's gonna be our first kind of meeting with the volunteers. It's gonna include a volunteer training, but also provide parents with more opportunities to be a part of our community from not only in the classrooms where we see most of our volunteers, but how can they assist us over at the library, outside at recess? My goal is to have little play groups outside at recess led by parents, but also give parents an opportunity to help from home, to help some of our working parents as well. But the most important one under community engagement for right now is expanding our current practices in the way that we transition our students from early intervention into the preschool program. How can we better supply parents with resources, community resources out there, as well as as much communication as we possibly can? So, as you know, many of our special education preschoolers come our way through early intervention, and for most parents, this transition can be a hard one, where they're used to getting services in the home setting, and now we're asking them to drop their child off at 9:05 and spend the whole day with us, five days a week. It can be a tough transition. So, we wanna expand our ability to provide support to our parents by not only connecting them to community resources, but also support them through their child's development and learning, particularly in the development of a child's IEP. The goal being that we wanna work with them by keeping them well-informed and empowered throughout the process. So, how can we do that, looking at the way that we communicate, and how can we refine that? So, right now, we have a parent resource center, and obviously, the website. But the goal is, by the end of the year, to refine the preschool program handbook. So, it's up to date. As you know, we have a preschool classroom at the Potter School to make it reflect the growing program that we have here in Dartmouth now, which is a great thing. So, we're looking to, again, inform them, empower them, and enable them to become active team players within our school as they make their way through the early childhood experience.
So, that's it for Cushman. Got any questions if you have any?
I love how you say "that's it for Cushman."
It's a lot.
That is a lot. No, I just, exciting to hear everything that you're speaking about. You know, as you know, I sort of like, I can really relate to some of the work that you're doing around that parent engagement. And it's exciting and wonderful to hear. It's hard work. I love the refining your inclusive practices and all of that. So, I just, I'm excited to see what's to come. I'm actually excited to, not just for Cushman, but the backpack. I wonder how, if there's any data around parents being more engaged or attending more. I can only imagine that it will. I know it's tough getting parents out, and it comes in waves and cycles, but I can only imagine that that makes the information more readily available so that, I don't know, I'm a glass half-full, I'm a positive thinker, so.
I looked today just to see what happened last Thursday, and 86% went through. And I don't know if that means actually looked at, but I know that it went through, and I'm not doing the math right, but 19%, it didn't go through. So, we still, I want to tell Michelle, sometimes we throw a paper out there, especially if it needs to be returned, because it's something that they fill out. I don't want parents to feel like they also have a printer as well. So, if it's something like that, we'll send paper out as, you know, two. But I'm hoping, I'll hear at the coffee with the director, 'cause that's something I'm looking for feedback on, how is that going? 'Cause I know for me, it was a hard transition, I will own that.
Hopefully, it makes it home more successfully.
Right, right.
It's rumpled in the bottom of the backpack.
Yep, yep.
And whatever is going home is also up on the website now, which didn't usually, didn't happen in the past, so at least.
Great, great work. It's exciting. Lucky little learners, so, thank you.
Well, I think it's outstanding, all the work that's being done. And I was on the computer today looking up all those letters that you mentioned earlier, because I wasn't sure what they were, about the social-emotional learning.
Oh, it's a great resource, yeah.
Yeah. And that's another whole piece that I saw run through all of the plans, and that is the whole focus on social-emotional learning and giving children strategies on how to deal with anxiety and depression and other areas that we find our young people have to deal with. But overall, it's a great plan, and I know that you worked the plan. I just wanted to ask you, I noticed this on the other plans, which I liked, is that you tell us what you did last year. The Grade K Reading Scope and Sequence Complete on Rubicon. Now, is that all done on those areas that you were working on last year?
Yes, it's all fully up on Rubicon for them to refer to.
All right.
Reading, writing, all areas.
Thank you. You did a great job. Thank you to you and your staff.
Thank you for the presentation. It's clearly, you know, you can see within your proposal here, within your SIF, that you have a lot of time to spend on it. My question is around the enrollment. So, as of last June, it shows that you had an enrollment of 140. Do we have, I'm just curious, 'cause in my time being on school committee, it seems like the preschool program has grown quite a bit. Is there, do we currently have a waiting list? Are there students? So, I'm just curious as to, is there more, is there a need?
There is. We have between 46 and 48 students on a waiting list.
Really? Wow. That's amazing.
Which is the hardest part of my job, is making those calls to parents to say your number.
Okay.
Yep.
And I'm gonna make the assumption, you know, we all shouldn't assume, but I'm gonna make the assumption that there's no more room at Cushman.
There's no more room at Cushman or Potter as far as peer-partner slots. There are special education slots still available, and those are saved for the students that come in through early intervention or parent request for testing, and we find out they require services.
Well, we must be doing something right to have the program continue to grow and to now have a waiting list of that many students. I'm a big fan, a big proponent of preschool, of the preschool program, 'cause I think it makes a huge difference for that transition into kindergarten.
It does.
Especially with the kind of things that are being done.
Agreed.
And that's with adding one preschool at Potter last year, and we added one.
And we added one, so now I have six as opposed to five at Cushman. But I have no more room.
I say that it's the need for universal Pre-K.
Right.
So, we'll throw that on the table and see what kind of work we can do towards that. But you're right, because we always said this, every district I've ever been in, the sooner we get our students.
That's right.
They're ours, and they're following our curriculum and learning here, and then they do so much better, because the program is rigorous.
And I know at the state level, they're starting to collect that data to see students coming into kindergarten, have they had preschool experience? So, I think it's out there, the importance of early childhood.
And like Dr. Gifford said, just getting them in their hours and they're in line with the curriculum that we're moving forward with, so, thank you.
Also, too, I mean, you're getting them in early and getting, you're also getting them used to being in school.
Exactly.
You know, building that foundation for them as they go through, so. Kudos, congratulations, great presentation.
Now, we have, oh, we have two of them coming up, Liz Carrera and Katie Poveo, presenting the DeMello Plan.
We'd like to also thank you for taking the time to listen as we discuss this year's school improvement plan. We're very excited at the prospect of adding and expanding on some of the great things that we're doing at DeMello School. Under the Teaching and Learning goals, you'll see that we haven't added any new initiatives or goals, but rather that we will continue to roll out and refine our work with the Lucy Caukens units of study and our work with the math workshop model and guided math. Over the past several years, we've added many new and very good resources, such as the reading and writing units of study at the elementary level. Our work now is not to widen our scope of resources, but rather to dig deep into the ones that we're using. We need to critically analyze the data. We need to identify our students' strengths and areas of need of growth. And we need to look at how we can best use these resources to address those. You'll hear Mrs. Coria speak in a bit about looking at identified best teaching practices as we strive to combine strong content knowledge and the pedagogical excellence to achieve increased student performance, and that really is our goal. We've really, we have rolled out the Lucy Caukens units of reading and writing across the board. We have fifth grade, a few teachers piloting the reading units. But other than that, we are fully implemented through grade four. Our writing units are fully implemented, and it's quite an undertaking. It's a very rigorous and deep program of study. And as our teachers have learned that, our goal now, as I said, is to dig deep and to really look at our individual student needs and pairing our student needs with the resources that we have, and looking at what our students, what their strengths are. As Mrs. McCurry mentioned before, we don't just look at areas of need, we look at areas for enrichment. So, in the Teaching and Learning, we're going to really just, you'll hear me repeatedly say, "dig deep" this year. We need to dig deep into data, we need to dig deep into our resources, and we really need to get into what our kids are learning and working with. Our workshop model is across the board. We have teachers, I think it looks very different than what math instruction looked like a long time ago. We have very little whole group lessons going on. We have many lessons at the beginning, and then our kids are off working on the things that they need to work on. So, we're, again, working on analyzing the data to identify what our kids need help with. And you might see a group of students working with a teacher at a back table. You may see one group of students working on a center on a skill that they taught a month ago but still don't own. You might see kids with an enrichment center working on expanding the topic that they're working on. But we really, none of that can happen unless we get very good at looking at our student data and understanding what our kids know and what they need to work on. So, Mrs. Coria's gonna address a little bit that, a little bit more of that as well.
Hi. So, under Access and Equity, our first school improvement goal is to increase student capacity for creating constructed responses on a digital platform. So, we all understand that we are working with 21st century digital natives, so to speak, students who are native speakers of the digital age and technology. We know that as these students progress from grade to grade, they will continue to utilize technology to learn and grow. At DeMello School, on any given day, you can walk through the door of any classroom and see students learning and creating using technology across the curriculum. With this in mind, we're focusing this year on transforming our traditional paper and pencil tasks to a digital platform in every classroom. So, our teachers will be designing reading, math, and science-constructed responses for students to complete on Chromebooks and laptops using web-based educational software and services. Moving on to our second school improvement goal under Access and Equity, which is to increase teacher capacity for implementing best practices into their everyday instruction. So, last year at DeMello, our professional development included engaging our teachers in connecting the ELA and math standards to DESI's standards for effective practice. So, this work at that time allowed our educators to directly link the knowledge and the skills embedded in the standards to those specific teacher behaviors and practices that lead to student learning. This year, our focus is to continue strengthening teacher instruction through identifying and implementing research-based best practices in every classroom. In vertical teams, our work will be grounded in exploring and implementing the rigorous teaching techniques outlined in Doug Lamov's book, Teach Like a Champion. For those of you who may not be familiar with Doug Lamov, he's a teacher, turned administrator, turned educational guru, who in the late 2000s decided he wanted to research schools that served high-need students that were doing well. So, he set out to look for the schools, he identified those schools, and then within each school that he identified, he looked for teachers that were exceptional. He found their classrooms, he got in and just studied what they did. And it was, this was a K-12 initiative, charter schools and public schools across the country. And in 2010, he published Teach Like a Champion, the first version, which I can say personally, as a teacher, transformed my teaching back when it was initially published. So, what Doug Lamov did was he just took everything that he learned from these exceptional teachers, all the commonalities, and he laid them out in a book that has been very popular and, like I said, very impactful over the years. And our goal is to bring Teach Like a Champion 2.0 to our staff this year. We're excited to engage our staff in exploring the second edition of this text, which, among other things, includes access to videos of both new and We are super excited to bring that to our staff, and we are feeling like this is going to energize and re-energize all the teachers at DeMello School. So, with that, I'll move aside so you can get to.
Before I do that, we have one other goal in under access and equity, and it alludes a little bit, Dr. Karafotis, to what you were talking about before, and that's surrounding, providing professional development to our staff and to ourselves on the current social-emotional topics facing our student population. We currently have more than 5% of our population whose primary guardian is someone other than a parent. We've sadly already had a student this year experience the unexpected death of a parent. We have students dealing with gender fluidity, battling mental health challenges, and families facing increasing levels of poverty. It is incumbent on us to equip ourselves with the tools to support our students and their families so that our students come to school available to learn. To that end, we have contacts with SMEC and with other contacts that were forwarded us by staff members who have connections with people who have expertise in these areas. This is, I think, you know, something that, as I said, it's incumbent on us to do, because this is the ever-changing demographic that our students are facing. They're facing more and more challenges, they're facing more and more things that we've just never had to encounter before, and it really is up to us to make sure that we can educate the whole child. And I use that phrase, "available to learn." If our kids are not emotionally ready to learn, we're not going to be able to make those gains academically. Our last action plan falls under the community engagement, and that is to increase the utilization of our school website and maximize our family communication on the electronic platform, so very similar to what Mrs. McHenry was speaking about. So, each Tuesday, which we've dubbed Take Home Tuesday, we send out our electronic backpack, and we've been using that route to send out our newsletters, our calendars, and any flyers that we've traditionally sent home in paper form. Additionally, we've made intentional use of our robocall, email, and texting systems to send the important announcements and reminders. I certainly don't echo Mr. Galishaw's voice, all those popularity with my calls, but we try our best to get the information out to parents as best that we can. We are really trying to, I use the word intentional because we don't want that system to become white noise, we want it to be important. We also track our data on how many phone calls are answered versus messages versus text versus email. If you can get it into 140 characters, it really does seem like text is the way that most people prefer to be communicated with, so we try to send out those messages as best we can. I'll give you a great example. Last Monday, our students were supposed to go to the Lloyd Center, and that field trip was rained out entirely. We were able to send a text out the evening before and just let parents know the field trip will be postponed. Set it up to, the phone call went out in the morning, all the kids came to school knowing already that that field trip had been postponed. So, in that realm, we try to keep people informed and up to date with what's happening, and that's a quick peek for you as to some of the things that are working and upcoming. We know we have a lot of hard work in front of us, but we are very excited to take on this challenge. So, with that, I welcome any questions or comments that we have.
Dr. Karafotis?
Well, you know, it's, like you said, it's a very complete plan, and you pointed out not having to add, you know, other things to it, but just staying with what you're working on and making that better. That's wonderful. I just want to ask you, though, I noticed in a couple of places regarding your resources, do you feel that the resources you're gonna need will be available?
That's a loaded question, Dr. K. So, I think that we absolutely utilize our resources to the very best of our ability. I think that no matter what public school you walk into, could you say, "I need more"? Of course you could. I think that we have what we need to be successful, and I think that we ask a lot of people, and they all answer the call. So, I'm always grateful to our coaches and our interventionists and our teachers who dig deep and are willing to do that work. You know, I think we try to be very careful and intentional about where we put our resources. We purchased a Chromebook for our, Chromebook cart for DeMello School with some of our money last year, because we see that as a need. We don't want our kids, the first time they're trying to do a constructive response, to be on the day of MCAS. So, the only way that we're gonna get that to happen is to give them practice to do it, and that's a real, you know, that's a reality, that we need the equipment to be able to make that work. So, I think we absolutely do what we can with what we have. I'm very grateful to everybody who squeezes every last drop of blood out of every stone we have, but I think, you know, you could do lots of things with lots of things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thanks.
Mr. Oliver?
Great presentation, as always. A lot in one plan. I will say, a couple of highlights for me is, I'm thrilled to see that you're taking those first steps with the tech integration, moving forward with, you know, designing questions around, well, not so much around technology, but on a technology platform in preparation of, you know, because there is that learning curve there, which I think we're taking care of it here in Dartmouth, and I'm happy to see that. Just something else that I picked up on was the professional development on, you know, social-emotional. Unfortunately, the realistic part of things is that society as a whole is changing, and I think we need to adapt and change our ways and our views as a school system and as a community. So, I'm happy to see that piece, and as always, the family engagement piece. I think families, just, you know, my own kids included, they love, when they were young, loved to get out to those puzzle nights and to those family nights at the school. So, anything you can do to bring families into the building and to get actively involved, I think, is huge. So, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, no, great presentation, lots of great work happening. You know, I see it coming home with my own daughter, who's a third grader, is having a great experience. I just, to echo Chris and Dr. Karafotis, I just love to see that professional development on, you know, the social-emotional, because teachers, unfortunately, how can they know that unless they live it, and it's just so critical to kids accessing that curriculum and learning. And just on an aside, I was talking to a caretaker who I didn't know which way the conversation was gonna go, because she was describing some complex situations at home, and she had nothing but unbelievable praise for you and your administration and your staff for caring and taking care of some pretty significant situations, so kudos to you. Yeah, it's just really, it's hard work, but yeah, good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, great presentation. I know last year, over the past couple of years, you've been with Mr. Roderick, as your tech teacher, and that, and how's that working out, having him in the building?
He's fabulous. I think he's really a testament to what I mean when I say, "We do what we can with what we have," and people being so willing to take what we, take whatever we say and run with it. So, he and I have had great discussions about going into every classroom versus scheduling time for projects versus, and whatever people want to do, he says, "Let's make that work." The projects that he's willing to take on with classrooms, he, I don't know, last year, they, he and a third-grade team built wreaths, they did wreaths and swags, and they sold that at the holiday time, but they did a whole project around that. So, they had to design them, they had to have, they did a design challenge, they had to come up with a business plan for it, they had to advertise it, they had a little budget that went along with it. So, he really will jump right in and support people and coach people, and I think that that is really the critical piece of what he's able to do. So, he's teaching our students, but he's also teaching our teachers. As Mrs. Coria said, we have digital natives, so these kids come in and they know a lot of technology, and he's able to keep their interest and teach them how to appropriately and apply it to what they're doing at school, but he's also coaching our teachers, what the kids are able to do, and open a lot of doors on how they can integrate the technology into their classrooms when he's not with them. So, he's great.
He's a rock star.
He is, he is. Mr. is a rock star in us.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ladies, good job.
Potter School.
Potter. Where is?
Potter Proud.
Yep.
Thank you. I know you have our complete SIP in front of you, but I do want to give a shout-out to Melissa McHenry, because, as you know, Potter School is a pre-K to five school, and Melissa has taken on the yeoman's work of providing the PD for my, for our preschool teacher. And so, the first thing Trish Weaver and I did is we sat down and we looked at the Potter Plan and the Cushman Plan, and really looked at what would make sense for her to grow as an educator. And so, I thank Melissa for taking on much of the preschool work, leaving me to focus on, Rick and I to focus on kindergarten through grade five. As you can see in teaching and learning, and much like my colleagues, we're really looking at developing and advancing that balanced literacy model. It's a continuation of the district's work, and we're able to support our teachers during their PLCs, which is their professional learning community, a joint time that they have at a grade level, as well as our professional development afternoons, faculty meetings, and release time day work, supporting them in developing and growing in Reader's Workshop, Writer's Workshop, and Wordwork to make that a complete program for them. We've also added vertical teams. We have three vertical teams with teachers from actually preschool to grade five, and on the afternoons, when they're working together, they're discussing the progression of skills K to five and ensuring consistent language and expectations as we move. Rick and I, the administrators of the building, get to go into all these classrooms, and we see that progression, but when they're deep in their teaching, unless they have a child themselves going through it, they don't often know what the skills look like before the students arrive or where they're going when they leave. So, this has been a great resource for them. The other area we're looking at is refining the project-based learning and real-world applications to engage students in authentic learning experiences. This is an opportunity for us to expand the junior achievement, the units in math and science into our STEM blocks, and really have the students think about how to access information that they need, which, as many of my colleagues have said, they're Googlers. They would never, they don't even know what an encyclopedia is, and they wouldn't even think of using some of the tools that myself or some of our teachers would, but they need to know, why is this important? Why is area important? Well, when you tell them you're going to give them a new floor in their bedroom, and it could be carpeting or it could be hardwood, now suddenly, they're interested. And that also gives us the aspect of incorporating technology into every classroom to expand what they're doing, whether it's as a resource or to create a template, and as my colleagues have said, they are far more sophisticated with their interest in technology than we are. I'm gonna hand the floor over to Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Heidi. And similar to our colleagues in the other buildings, when we're talking about access and equity, we're looking at our social-emotional learning. Last year, we worked hard to refine and unify our Tier One PBIS practices. This year, we're looking to refine the protocols that impact Tier Two, because we want to see those students not only reach but often exceed their potential. One of the things we're doing this year is looking for consistency in our behavior data. In the past, we would collect data on behavior issues for issues that we contacted the parent, but that's not very complete. So, this year, we're really looking at all behavior infractions to be in our Swiss database. We also feel this will be helpful when we're looking at transitioning our fifth graders onto sixth grade, they would have access to that data as well. But the real reason is that we were finding that by not having a complete picture with our behavior, we were identifying students who really were at the end of Tier Two, almost Tier Three. By having a consistent protocol for our behavior data, we're gonna catch kids early in Tier Two so that we can make those changes. We're also looking at modifying our screening process for Tier Two, especially with our check-in, checkout program. We're looking to see how we can target those problem behavior areas, and then look to see how we can work with children and staff to make that change in the behavior faster and more efficiently. As mentioned, the other schools, we're also looking to support the district and incorporate into our building-based PD more brain-based therapeutic and trauma-sensitive practices into our classrooms, but also expanding it to the non-classroom teachers such as art, phys ed, music, and health, and to our teacher assistants. And if you're doing a brain-based therapeutic and trauma-sensitive model, you're doing a universal model, because you're having students, you're having students in front of you, you may not know who is suffering from trauma. If you come with a mindset that this is for everyone, and as Melissa mentioned, the Rs, relationships, restorative practices, routines, if you do that for everyone, you're not gonna miss anybody. And teaching teachers a little bit more about trauma, it doesn't need to be a specific event that can cause trauma for a child, it's how they interpret it. And also, for our youngest children, as Heidi mentioned, we now have preschoolers, but even for our kindergartners, the brain development is severely impacted by trauma, and that can cause a lot of issues too, so we're gonna work with our teachers on that as well. In that same vein, in all our teaching spaces, including recess and lunch, we're insisting that there be calming areas, so children have a place to go so they can de-escalate when they need to. We're working with our teachers to come up with like a brain-based behavior toolkit and to remember simple things with kids. Sometimes just asking them, "Do you need a snack?", because food is very important. "Do you need water? Do you need exercise?" Some of those things are small, but for those kids that are having those kind of concerns, it's very important. And this year, we're introducing Mind Yeti into all our classrooms. It's a computer-based mindfulness program that can be done on the smartboard, and it helps children transition and also center and be able to learn. It can be done with a whole class, or it can be done with individuals in small groups. So, those are the things we're working on in the area of access and equity.
Thank you. And finally, our community engagement, and this is where we're really stretching ourselves. Over time, our students are more, you know, digital natives, but so are our parents. Gone are the days of, you know, paper newsletter, they read everything online, and so we're looking at this year, creating some PSA, some public service announcements, to wrap in our second step in PBIS, school-wide expectations, having student do, the students do the role plays that they very often will showcase in our assemblies, but having that taped and then sending that out to parents so they understand what it really looks like, what we're asking our kids to do with our expectations. We've tried in the past, we have our PTO meetings, and they have an agenda item, and it will be always something educational for parents, and we sit and look at the same eight faces. So, we're looking, how can we get this information out? So, we thought if we use their own children, they might tune in. And so, we're looking at doing parenting suggestions and support. We had a great experience bringing parents in to learn about handwriting without tears. Well, what would that look like if we did some PSAs for parents on handwriting and how to support children? This is a real stretch for us, because we're really good about, I'm really good about writing it in a newsletter, but this is gonna be a different platform, so this is our real stretch. We'll let you know. And that is all.
Kelly?
Wonderful. You guys just do amazing work, every one of the elementary schools, middle school, high school. I'm just really proud of hearing all that you're doing. But just to point out a few things that stick with me, and then what you, you know, start with the most recent first, that I love that, the PSA, I mean, because you're reaching those parents who, you know, we can say no stigma, but there are parents who don't want to really admit or don't even know how to even engage, begin to open that door to engage, and having that home in their own privacy of their own home with their children and viewing it, and then learning something too, that will help them, that wraparound model and sort of instilling some of the things that you're doing at school and feeling proud about doing it at home, and then reaping the benefit on all ends with learning and teaching, so really bravo. And just the work with the, you know, extending and deepening your work around that brain-based therapeutic model, it's just wonderful, just can't, it's just wonderful. Thank you so much for all of that mindfulness and thoughtfulness around that.
Dr. Karafotis?
Great presentation, as always. This is something I wanted to point out with all of the plans that came up. I love having you talk to us a little bit at the beginning of each of these presentations about what you accomplished last year. We used to always get what you were going to do, we never heard what happened, and each school has done that, and it's great to see the work that's being done, because you build on that. Each year, you're building on that. Your focus for social-emotional growth has been going on for a number of years. I know I've spoken to you before, and it's going to, each time, it goes to another level. And I also pointed out from your plan, the whole idea of these public service announcements, I thought that was great. So, keep up the good work, and I have just a little bit of investment over there, Miss Sophia, but...
Yes, you do, quite a bit.
Yes, thank you very much.
Majesty's School.
Thank you.
So, I will just echo what my colleagues have said. I like the theme that I'm seeing, obviously, there's a method to the madness, that all the SIPs are pulled from the district improvement plan, and it's filtered down, but I do like to see how it's real relevant. I like everything that you've explained. I, once again, to echo Dr. Karafotis', is...
Thank you.
So I will just echo what my colleagues have said. I liked, I liked the theme that I'm seeing. Obviously, there's a method to the madness, there are all the steps are pulled from the district improvement plan, and it's filtered down. But I do like to see how it's real relevant. I like everything that you've explained. I, once again, to echo Dr. Karafotis's comment about seeing what you did last year, I will say that I love the, I like the thinking outside of the box with the, I'm holding you two to it. I'm looking forward to seeing those public service announcements. So, great job, thank you.
We have a lot of people on staff that could do great jobs, they don't want to be on, so I said, you don't have to be on the screen, just have your voice.
That's right.
Voiceovers, so.
Absolutely.
That'll work, very good.
Also, with all the work that the whole district has been doing and putting out information to the public, I know with a lot of those pictures that go out, the parents are just looking to see if their own child...
But that's, you know, they live on social media, our parents. You know, they live on Facebook and Snapchat and all of that, so tweeting this and that, that's where they live.
No doubt about it, but again, as with one of the others, and I know we've got one more to go, and I don't expect anything different. I mean, job well done, congratulations. Again, you know, like, Dr. Karafotis, I have a little bit of an investment with my grandson there type of deal, but, and he's happy, he, you know, he loves it, and your teachers are doing...
That's more than half the battle.
You know, and again, you know, I mean, I saw a picture of him at Open House, and we were talking beforehand with the, with the wings, and that was fantastic. I mean, that's a great idea.
Yep, thank you.
May I ask one more question?
Sure.
Anything in the works for, I'm just curious, like, where is Waldo? Like, any plans, like, where are you going to be this year? On the roof?
Hell!
To incentivize something. You don't have to share.
Yes, we do, our reading group is looking at doing another, so you never, you never know. Actually, Mr. Porter has been up on the roof more this year. There's been a rash of kicking of stuffed animals, shoes, and now that, now that he knows how to get up there, he's off, you know, I'm in a dress, so.
There you go.
Yeah.
He's sending a slowie in up all the time, thank you. All right.
Okay, one more.
Last and certainly not least.
Listening so much, I was losing track of myself.
Yeah.
So, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present Quinn's school improvement plan to you all tonight. Mrs. Thomas, tonight will be presenting on community engagement. Mrs. Yarmolovich will be speaking about access and equity, and I will begin by presenting on the teaching and learning. Throughout what you've heard tonight, it's going to sound pretty similar, which I think is a nice thing. This year, our focus is not anything new, which is really nice. It is about building depth behind our current practices and initiatives in both ELA and math that have been new to teachers. In literacy, our focus remains to be on the Lucy Hawkins Reading and Writing programs. This year, grade three is beginning the writing program. Our grade four is beginning the reading program, and next year, grade five will also begin the reading program. We're continuing to provide professional development around all of the balanced literacy components, and we are reaching the end of the Lucy Hawkins rollout plan, and all grade levels will be at the full implementation of the Lucy Hawkins curriculum by next year. And we're very pleased that teachers can continue to have vertical and horizontal discussions around that content. In math, this year, through professional development, we plan to revisit the components of a workshop model. In particular, we plan to focus on specific strategies to support with differentiation of instruction, as well as providing meaningful extension activities that are aligned with the standards being taught, to challenge all students regardless of their level. By providing students with a workshop model, they'll be receiving targeted and differentiated instruction daily to fill gaps and expand their learning. And I will now turn it over to Mrs. Yarmolovich, who'll go into more detail as we, to talk about how we're going to provide these opportunities for teachers.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. A focus for us over the past few years has been expanding the current committees that we have and starting new committees to support students and staff at Quinn. A priority has also been to find a way to ensure teachers have a voice and that they are an active part of how the committees run and, in turn, supporting teaching and learning. In the past, committees have met before and after school to provide staff with consistent communication and ensure they have an opportunity to have input. We are now, this year, using one of the staff meetings per month as a time that those committees can meet and share out. The Instructional Leadership Committee is led by Mr. Granfield with a focus on any hot topic item that may come up throughout the school year. The PBIS Committee is led by Mrs. Thomas, and she will review SWISS behavioral data, as well as bringing up implementing various PBIS initiatives. I will be chairing the RTI Committee that is new for us this year, and it will focus on looking at academic data globally throughout the grade levels and utilizing the RTI block to target student growth. Lastly, the Technology Committee, which is also new this year, will be led by Mrs. Leary, and this committee will focus on integrating technology into the classroom and supporting blended learning as means to support the differentiation of instruction. As a grade-level team, teachers have the opportunity to decide what, which committee they would like to be a part of. The goal would be to have one grade-level teacher on each committee, but ultimately, the teachers will have the option to join whichever committee they would like to. This is an opportunity to increase teacher voice and collaboration within a very large staff and have a shared vision to move the school forward. Something we are really excited about this year is that we are starting a peer mediation program. Student mediators, through training and application of skills, will naturally be able to develop leadership qualities, increase their self-esteem, and influence students in a positive way. With adequate staff support and thorough training to these students, peer mediation, student mediators will create lasting change and have the potential to transform the school culture and climate in a positive way. So in addition to being provided with positive role models, throughout Quinn, they'll be able to work on solving conflicts. Students will also realize that adult intervention may not always be necessary to solve their problems, they can utilize the conflict resolution skills that they have learned through this training. Tiffany Martin, one of our outreach workers, will be applying for an upcoming grant to support the rollout of the program. The goal this year for that program is to offer to selected fourth and fifth grade students the training they need to provide the entire student body with conflict resolution skills. And it's anticipated that the fourth grade students trained this year will be fully implementing this program as fifth graders in September of 2019, and we will use this year to pilot the program.
Cool.
So now I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Thomas, thank you.
I was a little late with the, I'm guessing now we don't need it anymore. Good evening, everybody. So before I talk about our community event at Quinn, oh, you're going to come over here? Okay. I wanted to talk a little bit about our amazing fifth-grade peer leaders. So again, our outreach worker, Tiffany Martin, heads this program at Quinn. Our fifth-grade peer leaders take an active role in reaching out to both the Quinn community as well as the Dartmouth community. Within the Quinn community, fifth-grade peer leaders have given up their recess times on Fridays to assist teachers and students in kindergarten, first, and second grade, so they're taking their own time. They helped teachers with tasks in the classroom, supervised students in math centers, playing math games, reading to students, and also having students read to them. And last year, for the Dartmouth community, they organized the Super Bowl food drive to benefit the Dartmouth Council on Aging, and they also coordinated an effort to donate books to patients at Boston Children's Hospital through the All for Books Initiative, which is through the Scholastic Book Fairs. So they're doing really great work, our fifth-grade leaders, they're awesome. Here at Quinn, we pride ourselves on having plenty of opportunities for families to come into our school and see all of the awesome things that are happening. Our family nights include our Trick or Trunk that happens right around Halloween time, the Museum of Kindness and Caring, which happens close to Thanksgiving, our holiday pancake breakfast in December, and our Literacy Night in March. One thing that we have encouraged through the teacher evaluation is having our teachers facilitate different showcases throughout the school year. Here, they invite families to come into the school to show off student work, which gives the students the opportunity to share what they're doing and explain the content that they're learning. Something that is different that we're really excited about this year is our upcoming Quinn Color Run and Community Fun Fest, so I am going to plug it a little bit, because I know we have families that might not know about it out there in Dartmouth, and it is open to everybody. What makes this different from all the other Quinn family events is that it is open to the Dartmouth community, whether your family attends Quinn or not. This event will take place on Saturday, October 6th. It will be a fun color run, so the run is a little bit over a mile, and it will take place in the back of Quinn School and part of the Dartmouth Middle School. If you've never participated in the color run before, I'm not sure if you have or have not, but it's a lot of fun, and they get sprayed and with color, and also have color packets thrown at them, which gives them a splash of color as they're running, which who wouldn't love to do that? We're excited as adults, so the kids are going to have a great time. They're also going to have music, plenty of food, an inflatable obstacle course, the Lloyd Center for the Environment will be there, a K-9 demo by the Dartmouth Police Department will be happening, there'll be kids' crafts and raffles. So I just want to give a huge thank you to Linda Hamilton, she's one of our parents who is helping to run it, along with the Quinn Color Run Planning Committee, who has been working all throughout the summer to make this a successful event. So again, it's something different that we haven't done before. I know other schools have done things like this, that's been open to the community, and we're excited to do that as well. Thank you.
What time is the color run? What time is it?
So, it starts at 9:30 and the run starts at 11:00. So check-in is 9:30.
Planning on running, Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'll be there for two hours if I've got to run.
Can we at least throw packets at you?
Sure. Been there, done that. Chris?
What else can I say but wonderful presentation? You know, I'm thrilled to see that you're really just kind of focusing more on what you have already been doing, you're not changing things up very much, you're just keeping things at the core the way they are, and just kind of drilling down and getting in there and just kind of refining what you're working on. So it seems like you guys have a lot, and ladies, have a lot of great things going on at Quinn, and maybe I'll, who knows, maybe I'll turn out for the color run.
Again, great presentation.
I love the idea, the many committees that you have going, and how important that is for teachers to have ownership in the decision-making within the school. Your peer leaders, your fifth graders and fourth graders, it's a wonderful idea. It's just a great presentation, and I love the focus on the instruction with Lucy Hawkins Reading and Writing, that's a big piece, so thank you for all the work you're doing, you and your staff.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much for all that you do. Yeah, just notably, I love the work that you've always done, but that you noted, you know, with the PBIS and the RTI, the new committees, it's exciting. As Dr. Karafotis just alluded to, the peer leaders, how you foster the excitement in those students to sort of be those, you know, change the culture of the school, so to speak, it's wonderful, and it works, and it's just beautiful to see the kids moving on from your school, having had that experience these last years, so thank you for all you work.
Yeah. Job well done, I could agree with my colleagues with the peer mediation and, you know, going at, and, you know, in all seriousness, kudos to the, to the young men and women who are giving up, you know, their recess, their relaxation and that type of deal, to jump in and help, you know, other students and teachers out. That's, that says a lot for them, it says a lot for you as an administration to give them that leadership, and thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? All right, thank you. So, that being, that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Quinn, Potter, DeMello, and Cushman School, School Improvement Plans for School Year 2018-19.
So moved?
Moved by Dr. Karafotis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Oliver on the motion, any discussion? No, job well done across the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, under...
Stop. There.
Okay, all set?
Yes. Too many noises.
Under, under new business, Mr. Kylie is at the Joint Board of Selectment Finance Committee meeting tonight, discussing the capital improvement plan and the stadium renovations. Dr. Gifford, I don't know if you have anything?
If I could just interrupt, Mr. Chair, I actually just got a, just got a text message from Mr. Kylie that he just wrapped up over at Town Hall, and he said that the meeting went very well.
Okay, good. Good, glad to hear it. Thank you. Thank you, sir. But, okay.
Just, again, part of that is, at this time, unless anything changes after tonight, at the capital improvement plan, planning meeting, he, it's been agreed so far that they will be putting forth 1.1 million to add to the 400,000 that we already have in the...
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I was at, I was at the CIP meeting Thursday, and it went, seemed to go well, so.
So we'll see what happens with that, but all is going well.
Okay. Very good. Any questions?
Let's see what else he uses.
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit to the CIP. Mr. Kylie and I, and actually, Mr. Nunes was there as well, but Mr. Kylie and I presented at the Finance Committee meeting a few weeks back, I think it was the same week as our last committee meeting. That went well, there's a lot of questions that was asked, and I think, hopefully, moving forward, we're going to, the next step to this will be, we'll be looking at forming some kind of date and meeting so we can have a public forum, so we can educate, you know, people in town, because there's a lot of questions that are circulating out there, and we want to get out in front of this and try to, you know, answer everyone's questions before the town, before they come out on the town meeting floor as much as we can, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem, thank you, Mr. Oliver. Again, appreciate all the work you and Mr. Kylie and everyone else has, has done on this project, so. Okay. FY '18 Year End Financial Report, this is something that we get every year, again, usually, again with Mr. Kylie. This is just the year-end budget showing that the budget that we got of $41,915,606 was totally spent.
Spent.
Type of deal, and, you know, and, you know, just the transfers and adjustments that, that were made, so.
He did note that it was only about 1% of the overall budget that he required him to make some adjustments.
Adjustments, yeah.
And obviously, did well with the utilities and some special education pre-pays, of course, as usual.
Yeah, as usual.
Yep. Nothing new.
Nothing new there, okay. So, we do need a motion to, we do need to approve this report for the record.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Oliver.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dr. Karafotis on the motion, any discussion? Chair Herring, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next order of business, whoopee. New Befford Regional Vocational Technical High School School Committee, you want to do any talk, or you want me to do?
Why don't you start, and then I can always add, I did meet with Dr. Jenkins about it too, so.
Okay, that's fine.
If there's anything to add, I will do that.
Okay, that's fine. In case you, anyone has heard or has not heard, John Montigny, who is our, one of our representatives to the Great in New Befford Volk School Committee, has resigned for reasons I have not heard, I haven't even seen the letter, even though it was sent to the Board of Selectment, it hasn't been forwarded down here yet, but I'll get into that in a second. That being said, I sent Sean McDonald, who's the chairman, an email the other day, and I just, you know, said, listen, you know, heard, you know, did we have a game plan for obtaining town residents to put in, you know, send in letters of interest and resumes and such? You know, I says, I told him that we were meeting tonight, and then we weren't meeting until October 15th, so, you know, give me a call or get back to me. He did email me back and tell me that with the Selectment approving their, John's, you know, letter of resignation, you know, they, at that point, at their meeting, asked for, you know, resumes and letters of interest and such. you know, resumes and letters of interest and, and such. So I emailed him back, and I said, well, when are we meeting till the 15th? So this is my official request to people out there, that if anyone is interested in being considered for appointment to the Grade in New Bedford School Committee, Grade in New Bedford Vocational School Committee, to please send a letter of interest and/or resume into the Board of Selectmen, and please send it to them by October 9th, because we're meeting on the 15th, which is the following Monday. So my thought there was that would give them a chance to get, you know, whatever resumes and get them over to us, because it's a, the way it works is it's a joint appointment between the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the chairman of the school committee, and the town moderator. So I told, you know, I told Sean that, you know, they have gotten a couple of resumes at Town Hall and such, but I told him, you know, I was gonna stick with this game plan of October 9th, and
Sure.
we'd have everything for the 15th, and we could have a discussion at that point in time to see who we would like to see appointed to that, to that committee, and then go forward from there, so...
It sounds like a plan.
That's, that's my two, that's what I've done. Again, I'm open if, you know, if anybody wants to do something a little bit different, we can talk about it. I'm good with that.
No, I think it's very fair, as long as the Select Board communicates down the chain to us in timely fashion.
No, they weren't. Let me be perfectly honest with you, they weren't. Okay, I mean, I did get a phone call from a member that said, you know, he had, you know, Mr. Montigny had resigned.
Yep.
And that, but, I mean, we still haven't gotten any formal letter or notification from them that, you know, what's gotta go on or anything of that nature, so we're quote-unquote "flying" a little bit here, but, you know, fortunately, we know what has to be done, so...
I'm sure it was just an oversight, but, you know, let's, let's make sure, let's make sure that it gets down to us, and, because I think, I think that position is important.
It's very important.
I know our colleague, Dr. Jenkins, has brought it up several times about what their role is. I also brought it up last year, I'm gonna bring it up again in regards to New Bedford Voc, that while we really don't have any, where, you know, it's not under our purview, how we just make, through, through the, the chair of the school committee, make the appointment of the person that, I did have a conversation with one of our reps to the Voc School Committee, Mr. Michael Shea.
Yeah.
And he would be more than willing, and it's, it's up to you, Mr. Chair.
No, I...
To come out and with, I believe, Paul Kitchen, their businessman, to just share, share, you know, what's going on over there, and how, how things go down, because I know Dr. Jenkins, and it may not be a bad idea, because I, I'd love to get schooled on it a little bit myself.
You know, one of, and, and maybe what we can find out too is, one of the things, a number of years ago, that they used to do is they used to have the elected officials of the town, like the Board of Selectmen and the school committee, you know, from Fairhaven, Dartmouth, you know, the city councils, you know, different days, type of deal, and they would give them a tour of the school and go, you could go through the school and, you know, see what's going on, and I haven't been back in there since they, you know, put the big edition on, so I'd really like to, yeah, you know, so maybe we can also get them to extend that invite to us to, to see, I mean, that's, and you see, you know, what they're doing in the different shops and that type of deal, so maybe we can, you know, get a, get an invite, get them to, you know, come back and do that too, that would be, that would be nice. I mean, you know, I don't know if we'll get it before the, you know, sometime in the, you know, early spring if, if they did it, or even, you know, depending how the weather runs in the winter, you know, that, that type of deal, in the, you know, some morning, you know, it's, it's a couple of three-hour tour.
Absolutely, and I think it's important, because it is, it makes up a, a good chunk of our budget, of the town, the town's budget, so...
Yeah. And, you know, a number of our students, you know, headed there to, for different things, and, listen, you know, we need carpenters, electricians, plumbers, HVAC, you know, mechanics, you know, things of that nature, so, I mean, those are great, absolutely fantastic schools for, for those students to be able to, to attend, and great programs for them to have.
I agree.
So, so that's, that's where we'll go at there. If you wanna, you wanna say anything about your meeting with Shannon, or you're good?
Said it all.
Okay.
You covered it.
Beautiful, okay. All right. Anybody else? So we're good with October 9th and that? Okay, thank you. Superintendent update?
Okay, a couple of things tonight. As you might recall, I was recently elected to the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Executive Board, so we had our first retreat two weekends ago up in Rockport, so a couple of big topics on our agenda, talking constantly about the foundation budget and the formula, and the failure of the legislature to pass something or revise something, so we'll be looking for the association to continue to work on that and come out with some kind of plan, which I will be continuing to communicate with you all as things come from the association on what they might do next to try to get some of this, this work passed. And we also heard from Andy Colkins, and he is from Next Generation Learning Challenges, and it was so interesting, because as you know, we had Bill Daggett speak one of our opening days, we're really talking again with the Innovation Lab, which hopefully next meeting we'll be able to see, future-focused education, and what does that mean, and so it was good to hear that Andy, who is also working with a number of districts across the state, about what learners need to thrive in a world of change. And as we know, we're in the 21st century, shifting, shifting models of systems and practices that we really need to think about, and again, we're dipping our toes in, into that work, so it was good to hear that, and just really providing us with more and more resources on, on bringing to our teachers, and how to, how to do that, and how do we continue to ask ourselves, what does it take for us to be really future-focused? We had a Grade 5 music learning experience again last week, we do this every year, so I was able to come over for that. Bill Kingsland and John Souza ran that, and you might be familiar with what happens, but all the Grade 5 students come, and I think it's really great, because they, not only is the orchestra and the band onstage to perform a few little pieces to entice the students, but also they're, they're learning about what does a flute sound like, what does a sax sound like, so to encourage them and prompt them into choosing some instrument as they move on. We have started our one, well, I'll say Phase 1 of our one-to-one initiative, so this past week, on the early release day, all, our teachers from Grade 6 through 12 received their Chromebooks, so to start that, so with some professional development, so that, again, many of our teachers, they're just, they've just already been involved in all of this work, and, but some are still a little, you know, need some help. So that's Phase 1, we passed those out, obviously with Jonathan Galishaw and his tech, his staff's help and support, we've been able to make this happen. The plan for Phase 2 will be to start in October for students to receive theirs with, at the middle, and it's gonna be 8th through 12 for the students, but we wanted all of the middle school teachers to have one as well, because they're supporting what's happening. So the, each school will then present them to the students with some expectations, meetings so that they can learn about, what are the expectations for these and why are we doing it? You know, you heard Principal Tebow talk about that a couple of weeks back, about it's not just a, a notebookers kind of thing, so, so we're excited, very excited about that. It was really nice to see, especially at the middle school teachers leaving, and just really thanking, thanking everybody for being able to move, move us forward with this. We had our early release day, as I said, and a lot of the folks did, usually at this time of year, we provide time for the, the work with the educator evaluation system, so they develop their SMART goals, get some training, especially for new folks that might be the, maybe not sure of what the whole process is about, they get to meet with their evaluators, et cetera, so that happened last week. And of course, we had the DEF event, and I don't think we talked about that before at the last meeting, but I, I can't remember now, but where our teachers that received grants, we were here, and they were all recognized, and they got to tell folks what their grant request was and what they were gonna be doing with the equipment. And you, you heard Shane tonight talk about the post-secondary event, and I just wanna give a shout-out to the department, the guidance department at the high school with, under Bridget Martin, Martin's leadership, because it's the first time, and as he said, there's 90, 90 or 92 colleges, you know, folks coming, secondary education, I should say, opportunities, I'm thinking there's military, et cetera, but whatever it might be. So this is really, really a good thing that's happening here. And that's it, that's my quick update for tonight.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent?
Thank you.
Okay. I've got just a couple of, just a couple of things, yeah. Dr. Gifford, you know, talked about the DEF grants, and I was here to, for that presentation last week, and it was really, you know, thank you to the Dartmouth Educational Foundation for, you know, the grants that they, and they provided to, to the teachers, and it was really interesting to, to see what they're going to, what they're doing with the, the funds that they received, the, the little things that they're doing, from getting a cart to, you know, some soothing music for the students, you know, and at, at the preschool level type of deal, to, you know, additional math help and, and such, it was really, really nice, and, and my thanks to them, I know the, Shannon, if Shannon was here, she'd be talking about the spelling bee coming up in November.
I was just gonna look at the date.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the date, I love the paper, I forgot the paperwork sitting on, sitting on the island at home, but that's in November, I know it's the fir, first week of November, November 6th.
Might be the 6th, let me see.
November 6th.
I know it's in here.
6th or 8th?
Let's see.
I don't have it on my calendar, I know that.
Oh, I see it on the 8th.
November 8th, okay. So that's, November 8th is the annual spelling bee that the Dartmouth Educational Foundation, they put on here, so, and it's a great time, it really is, and I, I enjoy it, so we'll be here for that. And, and again, Shane talked about the, the band competition coming up on the 29th, and that's our annual home show. We've got 10 bands from all around southeastern Massachusetts and Rhode Island, and even one, I think, Norwalk, Connecticut is, is coming down, so they'll be here. Starts at 6 o'clock, Dartmouth is tentative to be on right around 9 o'clock, and awards are directly after that, it's a great evening of entertainment. If you get an opportunity to, to come to it, we'd appreciate seeing you, the students, and all the students from all the schools, would, would enjoy seeing everybody. And that's about all I have. Anybody have anything?
I, I have a couple of things.
Go ahead, sure, go right ahead.
Just, I don't know, it wasn't mentioned earlier, but the, the Dartmouth High School class of 2020 is having their annual 5K. It's a fundraiser for the class of 2020, so there, in the, on the district website underneath flyers, you can get more information on that. The deadline to register online is the day of the Quinn Color Run and Community Event, but the actual event's on October 7th for the, for the 5K. And speaking of the flyers, Destination Imagination is how, some of the deadlines for registering to be a part of that program are online. And if I could just say that, there's a blood drive at Dartmouth High School on October 28th, and I'm happy to report that the American Red Cross does now have it listed. And Mr. Martin allowed us in the school, on the school photo days, to meet with the representative from the American Red Cross, and she did a little run-through, it's gonna be in the, the Special Ed Parent Advisory Council is hosting it, and she commented she was so excited to have another location in Dartmouth, because Dartmouth really comes together to donate blood, and she was just ecstatic about organizing it, and it's on the website now, probably went on today, so that's October 28th, and you can register online, pre-register online for that.
When is your spread craft fair? Is that the same day?
It's, it's the same day, from 10 to 3 in the Field House portion, and there'll be 140 tables of, when we talk about resources and parent information, of community organizations, nonprofits, businesses, who are here to talk with people one-on-one, and we weave it in with a craft fair, so that, to sort of lessen that stigma, that folks, whether they should or not, they are less likely to go out and say, hey, I need to be connected to a resource in the community, they're less likely to do that, and, and so it's a nice event, so thank you for, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's after our next meeting, so we'll probably elaborate on it. Thank you for mentioning, October 28th.
October 28th, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next meeting is on October 15th, town meeting is the next day, which is the 16th.
That's right.
What I wanna do is, hopefully the Innovation Lab is gonna be ready, is gonna be up and running, so what I would like to do is start our meeting at 6 o'clock, and then, you know, adjourn the meeting while we take a tour of the Innovation Lab, and then we go back in the session. Does that work, 6, does 6 o'clock work for people?
Sure.
Type of deal? Okay, so, October 15th at 6 o'clock, we'll, we'll start the meeting, we'll adjourn into the Innovation Lab to get a, get a tour of that, and away we'll go. All right. That being said, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Oliver, seconded by Ms. Amaral on the motion, any discussion? Chair Herrington, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for coming, have a good week, be safe.